We'll call this workshop into order.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Today, we're going to continue with certain departments, and we've got them here so that they can present to the City Commission, talk about their budget in general, and then ask any questions you may have. We're going to start with the Convention Center, performing our sequita with Yahira.
I'd like to start off by thanking the Budget Committee and the City Commission for allowing me to present before the General Fund. I know that the Enterprise Fund is scheduled next week, but I might have to leave a little bit early. We don't know.
Congratulations.
You have the best excuse there. I don't believe in you.
So, as we get started with the Convention Center budget, I wanted to show you a visual of where we were four years ago and where we are today. Four years ago, when we were looking at a 2018-2019 budget, we were scheduled to run out of working capital. And as a matter of fact, by this fiscal year, we were going to be at $1.8 million in the red, meaning that we would have had to dip into the General Fund. Now, where we are today is a fund balance estimated closing year of $7.4 million. And we're in a really good place. We're in a really healthy place. I wanted to show you this graph. This graph doesn't show the entire $7.4. What it shows is the net operating working capital. This is what we've been able to do at Convention Center, minus the sale of assets. So, it's actual numbers that we've been able to produce at the Convention Center. And we're in a really good place. We're ending at $4.2 million. And I wanted to... To discuss a few different things. One, baseline of where we would want to keep that net working capital. And number one, we wanted to discuss a minimum number of days. The event industry is very volatile right now. Specifically with COVID, we never thought that we would shut down for that long, but we did. And so, what does that mean for our future? And as we're planning events in the future, so we have 180 days that I've recommended. And we can discuss if it's enough or we would to raise up, which would be a little over $3 million to have in our reserve. We're also proposing an increased management fee. The Convention Center and the Performing Arts Center both pay a management fee to the General Fund for operations that we get from the General Fund.
What is it, Rodney? What is it, Rodney?
Right now, we... The Convention Center gives the General Fund, I believe, $150,000 in check right now. And then, there's an additional $100,000 that we get from Performing Arts Center. So, I think it's a total of $250,000. I'll verify those numbers right now. And then, the next thing is to receive input on how to move forward in terms of how we're going to grow the operation at Convention Center, whether it's to add to the operation, to beautify the building, which is already 15 years old, what things the City Commission would like to see, to improve our festival grounds, which is beautifying the space, also adding additional electrical, boring, and different things that we would need to become that festival destination at the Convention Center, to have perimeter fencing. And also, we're going to discuss the perimeter fencing and the underpass across Ware Road. We're also looking at a storage building as we grow our special events. We're in more need for storage. And then, you know, just a wish list of things that we think would make our facilities, both for McAllen Convention Center and the McAllen Performing Arts Center, more competitive, not only locally, but nationwide. So, we're now competing with different cities across the nation to be able to bring the best events across the nation to the city of McAllen. So, with that, I wanted to start off with the decision package for the... The department is requesting a total of three new full-time positions. We're also requesting a total of six positions that are seasonal. Now, the positions that are seasonal would actually be paid for by a client that's renting the building for two months, but they need to come in and have a turnkey operation. So, we'd like to provide that turnkey operation, but we don't want it to be taken necessarily from the staff that we have, because they're all allocated for specific special events. So, we're requesting those positions, but we're also requesting that the money be offset by the promoter that's coming in. An audiovisual technician, two event coordinators, and we're also requesting that we have a facility manager position request to a deputy director as we feel that the growth of the facilities would merit a deputy director. We're also requesting additional revisions, which is to have expanded... To expand the position of our lead operations coordinator, a facility maintenance technician to a lead maintenance technician, and also expand the responsibilities of our manager of sales and event services. The department is requesting a total of $33,000 in other services and charges. Mainly, what we're looking at is that there is an increase in personnel costs, security, temporary staff. And so, here, it's just to offset that increase in hourly payments. But we are looking at decreasing... A reduction in professional services, as well as a reduction of retail managers to be able to offset some of those costs. We're requesting an increase in fuel and lubricants in vehicles. Again, there has been an increase. We don't plan to increase the usage, but we're just offsetting the cost of the increase of fuel by $10,000 and also vehicles by $10,000. We have some capital outlay requests for tents and counters of $42,000. We have a request for a trailer, 35-foot trailer and an enclosed trailer for a total of $26,000. Inventory control system for $6,000. And we're also requesting a building, which has a total square footage of 90,000 square feet. Now, we're looking at 9,000 square feet being $1 million, but that might be short-lived, because we would probably need a building that has a square footage of 18,000 square feet, which would double that.
You're talking about building it there?
Building it on campus behind the loading dock.
Then, at some point, you'll discuss that large lot, right? Where you really a parking lot for employees, I guess, the enclosed lot. So, in discussion at one point, to maybe do like an open air covering that would help for storage and keep protecting from the elements, but not having to do all the walls and stuff? I mean, you not cover that whole area?
We would use the wall that already exists outside of that loading dock on one end, and we would expand north. We do need that loading dock space, because we have trailers and trucks and every company unloading inside of the loading dock to get into the facilities in the exhibit hall. So, we're requesting to expand north of that loading dock.
Could you also put a cover over the loading dock? Just steel, probably 30 feet high, 40 feet high?
It's only money, Commissioner. We can do it.
Well, he means instead of enclosing it.
When you get security, you have all those issues.
Cover the entire loading dock and now protect you from the elements. Not air-conditioned.
I think the premise was with this building was to store items that are assets to the city and need permanent storage, correct?
That's correct.
So, if you put that in the loading dock area, you're going to interfere with the operations for the seasonal clients that come in and put on their shows, right?
That's correct.
Because you're going to be taking away square footage.
We'll take away square footage of the loading dock.
Right. I don't think you want to do that.
We would still use one of those walls just north of the loading dock.
Describe what you would be storing.
So, as we've grown the operation at Convention Center, we've run out of storage. And if you pass by Convention Center, you'll see that there are a lot of containers that are currently outside of the Convention Center and in our Sundance Park area. Those containers are all of our special event equipment and then, equipment that does not need to be climate controlled. So, there is equipment that is made out of wood or that is made out of metal that needs to be climate controlled for specific reasons. And the equipment that we're proposing is equipment that does not need to have climate control.
So, those containers are there, okay? Do we lease them or do we go out?
No, they're ours.
This is just a thought. We're not going to be building another Convention Center, at least not in my lifetime, to be honest. I'm 50. So, why not just expand the building all the way to the edge? Why not make it 36? And then, you have a dividing wall where obviously, half of it, let's say the 18,000, option two, 18,000. It's either going to be ventilated or air-conditioned. And then, you leave the other half, the other 18,000, you build out to the property line and just have the four walls unbentilated. And then, if you need that extra storage on items or assets that don't require ventilation, or at least not for any period of time, you can leave it there. Because it's going to cost less now and it is going to be in 15 years if we need to fill it out again.
We need to build that way.
I'm sure that's something else considered, right?
Right. Like I mentioned, the 9,000 square feet right now, we feel will fill up very fast. And so, this budget year, we had looked at 9,000, but that's why we are also proposing the option of 18,000.
And I guess that's we... I would think the 18,000 is making more sense. But how many parking spaces are being removed?
Probably a total of 16 parking spaces, just a simple...
So, as activity at the Convention Center grows and we're removing parking, will it not become an issue in the future for some of the events?
I think that it becomes an issue for events a few times out of the year. For the most part, we're able to accommodate all of the events that we have. We have about 1,800 parking spaces around the campus. And then, a lot of overflow parking around and outside Convention Center. There are a few times of the year, like Giza the Fimas and bigger events that do utilize each and every parking space, because we have over 10,000, 15,000 people that are at the facility at once.
I have a question for you, Chief. My understanding is over $10 square feet, you have to put a large pressure system?
Or it depends on what the occupancy of the building is. For stores like this, I have to check to see what they're storing, what they plan to put in there.
But I know it's pretty expensive.
He can, because...
Any questions on the storage?
Does it have to be right there or adjacent? Can it be off-site, very close?
We've discussed the possibility of having it onsite and off-site. The reason that the staff felt that onsite was appropriate was for ease of transporting the equipment from the building to the destination, is we have to travel together. It would just be a little less efficient. We've discussed both, and then that option exists.
Is the equipment based on certain types of events that happen throughout the year? Or is there going to be equipment there stored all year round?
There would be equipment there stored all year round, because it'll be assets that we own.
How much of it will you fill up already?
We would fill up the 9,000 square foot.
The 9,000 we already fill up?
So, we currently have a building we're using at parks across the street for storage, but we unloaded 12 semi-trailers of things we're going to use this year for the Southfold Illuminati Festival. And we've got another three semis coming in next month that we're going to be using for that. So, those are some of the things that we're accumulating, was what we've already accumulated, definitely, to store some of that.
The dinosaurs?
Dinosaurs are leaving Monday, so we're going. All the containers and all of that.
The yard we have in the front, in the roadside, the second loading dock, that's where they have the trailers.
They have some trailers there, sir, and we have some containers there as well. But the containers that the Convention Center has, we probably have a dozen containers there with other things. And it's just a ease of, as Yahira said, transporting and using some of that... Some of the portnocks and equipment that they have at the Convention Center and being able to go right outside the back of the dock and load those things and bring them. But if we're going to move it to Sundance Park, then we're just going to have to plan on transporting from there. That just makes it a little longer.
Now, is it an aluminum building or is it just...
We're looking at, actually, we want to mirror the building with the facade.
We have to.
It's a shed, essentially a shed, but we're looking to mirror facade of the Convention Center, so it doesn't look nice as we pass by. In addition to that, capital outlay are also requests on the audiovisual side, microphones, HDMI cables, storage cases for LED boards, conference phones, and additional curtains for the exhibit hall. Those black velvet curtains that go all the way to the top, that really help with sounds, so it won't echo inside the exhibit hall. And we're looking at a total requesting capital outlay for machinery equipment of $160,000.
Was it the last budget cycle or two cycles ago that you acquired the golf carts? Isn't there a cycle there?
This last budget cycle. They're barely coming in.
Okay.
And then, two cycles ago, we ended up... Because we COVID hit, we ended up freezing all capital outlay expenses, and we did not make those purchases.
And then, that rolled over too.
Any questions on Convention Center? The next... We want to go into depreciation, management depreciation. So, for...
On Convention Center, they still have the underground pedestrian crossing. You didn't have any kind of diagram?
That's right. I do not have a diagram for the underground pedestrian crossing, but if anyone available?
So, the gentleman just has to go from what point? What it's starting?
Somewhere around where West Side Park...
Oh, we're looking at where the hotel is crossing, right where the street is. That was the preliminary alignment where we did the estimate on that. We were looking at similar high-water crossings. It's been a real difference. This is just... There's a hotel right there, and then, there's several hotels that are in the area. We would cross from that hotel, cross Houston, and then, there's enough space we think we could transition a sidewalk up, and then, you would come out to West Side Park.
The box. It's a 10-by-10 box.
Right now, we have it priced as a standard box. We could get more exotic, you know, adding LED lighting, you know, some architectural features, but that would be an upgraded cost. Right now, we have it as a standard box, just crossing sidewalk, matching ADA is how we price it.
Would this be similar to the hiking bike trail that goes underneath Jackson? The precinct two project? Because you're using it. It's a culvert, right? A culvert box?
Exactly. It's similar to that. That one is just a box, no frills. That was what we priced out here.
Almost hate to add, I mean, you're not going to trench it, right? You're going to bore.
They would have to do some type of jack and board. Sometimes, we leave means and methods to the contractor, but it would be boxes. We wouldn't open the road and try to close the road.
Roy.
Yes, sir.
I guess what we're looking for is to earmark some funds and then, the specifics of what we're going to do with that money. We're going to get, you know, more...
I'm sorry, Tony. I can't hear you. Say it again.
Well, I know. It's very hard to communicate here.
Go ahead.
Okay. I guess what we're getting here is that we need to earmark some funds to decide what specifically we're going to do in the future. Is that what you're trying to get here?
Well, no. Actually, we, you know... The request from Convention Center is to start designing, planning, and constructing a tunnel under Ware Road. There are some activities that we've had in the past that were problematic, because we had to cross Ware Road. And so, this is a way to connect...
But it's not only in that, but, you know, when you put $1 million for, you know, a warehouse facility, storage, we're just trying to approximately get some monies in here in order for us to specifically do what we want to do. Because there's no budget. I mean, if there's a budget, there's not anything specific of what you're going to build.
Right. I mean, no. I mean, we've got... You would do the design work, you know, through the fiscal year, but this is an actual request for us to go build this. This is a request. Now, the $1 million doesn't get us there. I'm sure she's going to ask that we get more money from somewhere else. What's your plan there?
That's what I mean. I don't believe you can. Okay, with that money.
When we first looked at the storage building, the 9,000-square-foot storage building would be built for $1 million. As we're looking at this, the question is, do we want to keep it at the 9,000 square foot? Or should we build it at the 18,000 or greater?
So, we could either continue to take it out of that fund balance or bring money from another fund. And you all know which one my favorite is, so...
Well, that's a healthy fund balance, a living convention.
Well, it does you no good to build for what you use it to do.
Right, right, absolutely.
But...
No.
But if I answered, if I understood your question, we want to go build this thing in the next year or two. We are badly out of work in that.
Yeah. I agree with that, and I don't like, you know, all these other storage boxes there. It's not functional. It's not good. There's a lot of investment in the hotels. There's some new ones going in. So, you know, we have to be aesthetically well, good for that for the present, because they're the ones bringing in a lot of monies to the Convention Center area. What we do has to be done in a manner that is very, very aesthetically clean.
And that 9,000 square... 9,000 something square feet? No, we have to go with the 18.
Yeah, definitely.
It makes more sense.
Yeah, and then, on the tunnel, I'm just... This is new to me. I'm here one year. I have no idea about a tunnel, okay? So, you're hitting me new on a tunnel. So, I just want some more explanation, what you're trying to do.
So, what we did is we proposed this at the original budget with the budget team, just as some items for consideration, just to look at extending that hiking bike trail and give that connectivity to the hotel. We actually have it phased out as far as this... Our engineering request was $150,000 to do the design this year and then, seek construction dollars in the following year. Because it takes about six to nine months to get something like that designed out. And it was just something to see if it's something y'all wanted to try to get that connectivity to West Side Park. There's a lot of events, we've noticed, running events, baseball events. And I've seen those pedestrians crossing above the street, and we saw this as a solution that we could present to you.
Even if the future is not West Side Park, if the future is something else that would be good for their... For us to be able to go under instead of above ground on Ware Road, that would be good.
Yeah, that's an excellent point, because we did Kennedy for that reason, to develop it. So, no matter what's over there, you can't cross Ware Road. A pedestrian cannot cross.
I believe that we do need to have a tunnel and a very, very good, efficient tunnel for whatever happens in the future in all those areas, all those acres. So, I don't want to shortcut back. That's what I'm getting at.
The general consensus is general, and definitely 18,000 square feet of storage or more, correct?
Yeah, I think greater.
Okay, Roy, make it happen. Don't say it's only money.
Right. It's only money. It just says it's only money.
That is for everyone to understand, because, you know, this is budget. But when you're producing revenues, that is what you want to do. You want to create revenues for the future. You know, this is not spending for, you know, brick and mortar, okay? It is going to be brick and mortar, but it is to create revenues for the future. Because self-tax revenues, hotel motel tax revenues, you know, restaurants, a whole bit, that connectivity is essential for it to be used. That's what we're building. We're building an enterprise.
For members of the media of any, a lot of times, we say stuff and jests, like for example, right now, we know how important it is. And the reason we're able, hopefully, to lower taxes is because our team is pretty conservative. And we've done very well, and we'll keep on doing it. But we'll also have a little problem whenever we do our stuff.
Okay, onward.
Convention Center depreciation budget. We're requesting a total of $195,000 in items rated with $5,000. The big request that we have here, $150,000 for a cooling pipe tower. The building is 15 years old, and we're starting to see that we're having to continuously patch and repatch the cooling pipe tower. We really need to replace it. And so, after 15 years, the recommendation was to replace it. We're also requesting a $10,000 aluminum 4K projector. And the total amount is $45,000. For items less than $5,000, we're requesting desktop monitors. And we're also requesting $39,000 in audiovisual requests, $7,200 in video surveillance requests, and $62,500 in refurbishing the furniture that we currently have at Convention Center. Again, the furniture that we have at Convention Center is 15 years old, and we're starting to show it. I know that in the past, there has been a request from the City Commission to look into the carpets at Convention Center. We still think that we have another year or so with the carpets that we have. And we'll be coming back to the commission next year and putting some of those dollars in depreciation for next year. But we think that we... The carpets are still good for the next year. Any questions on depreciation? And next is the McAllen Performing Arts Center fund. And I have a visual for you to look at. This is sort of where we were. We were healthy four years ago. We're in a better condition now. And that gray line that you see there, which is over $3 million, that is what our fund balance probably looks like to date. The Performing Arts Center had a fantastic year. This year, we're at 200% of our expected revenues for the year. Most of the events that canceled during COVID rescheduled for October through March, and we've had a really good run. The Performing Arts Center is very volatile also in COVID because what we're seeing as, as the spikes go up, the attendance goes down. And if attendance goes down to a certain point, events start to cancel. And we're starting to see that. We're starting to see events canceled now and we started to see events canceled in January and February as the spike went up. But even though we've had events canceled, we still had our best year and we have grossed to date over six hundred thousand dollars just in rentals, which is double the projection that we had. So we've had a really good run so far. One of the, uh, things with Performing Arts Center that we realized is that the management fee at the Performing Arts Center is currently six hundred thousand dollars. Now, this management fee pays for payroll, um, because all of the payroll comes out of the Convention Center fund. Now, the pro rate of amount of that payroll in terms of how much work and hours actually goes into the Performing Arts Center is closer to one point one million dollars. So what we are requesting is to move an additional four hundred thousand dollars as a management fee from the Performing Arts Center to the Convention Center to offset that difference in payroll of the work that's going into the NHTC. In addition to that, we have a total capital outlay request of a hundred and nine thousand and non-capital outlay request of a total of a hundred and ten thousand. So the capital outlay request is an outdoor advertising bulletin board that goes above the box office, uh, new equipment for video projection and in-house advertisement, and a wireless mic system. For non-capital outlay, we're requesting a scrubber for five thousand dollars, sage lights, an audio stage monitor, additional mics, and, um, LED, an LED light package for the multipurpose room. That multipurpose room, it's a little sad. We want to make sure that we decorate it and we make it look nice for the events that we have in that space. Uh, we're also requesting, um, Herecom belt packs with headsets. The Herecom belt packs is a communication system so that people that are on the stage can hear the people that are on the audio and video consoles and they can communicate back and forth. And then we're also requesting, um, some risers for the stage. So the total request for non-capital outlay is a hundred and ten thousand.
What's wrong with the risers count?
We need additional.
Oh, more?
Yeah, we need additional risers. Any questions on the Performing Arts Center? The items in. The NHTC depreciation is, um, ninety thousand dollars for a replacement of the boiler. We're seeing that that boiler is getting very rusted very fast and we really need to replace it immediately. And the other request is for a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for a water softening system. Now, what's happening is because of, because we don't have a water softening system, it's rusty, the pipes, the pipes are all metal. So there's also, um, we also need to look at what the replacement cost would be to start looking at plastic, uh, pipes within the building.
Well, we have a LED looking at it. Awesome.
If, if the, if the cost goes over the fifty thousand dollars, uh, we recommend that you should look at getting some kind of a.
Will you get it right?
The next one is Quinta Market Fund. And then we're done. So we have one request, um, for Quinta Market Fund and it's to reclass the Quinta Market Fund Manager to a Executive Director and Assistant Director position. And this is, um, to account for growth and added responsibilities, um, within the department. Total request, eighteen thousand three hundred square feet. We're requesting, um, from the baseline, additional landscaping maintenance tools of two thousand dollars. We're requesting, uh, twenty thousand dollars for a branding campaign as we get started with the Quinta Market Fund Center for Urban Ecology Extension, uh, to increase the dues and subscriptions to five hundred and fifty dollars, training by two thousand dollars, and travel by four thousand dollars as we see traveling, the travel costs go up. In addition to that, we have, um, a total capital outlay, uh, request of seventy-two thousand and a non-capital outlay request of five thousand six hundred and five. And really, the seventy-two thousand is, of course, it's an old mansion and we continuously have to improve the facility. We do have, um, the main gates that need to be changed out, AC compressors that need to be changed out, and repair work on the adobe that continues to crumble, so that needs to be addressed as well. For the non-capital outlay request, we're requesting additional outdoor chairs and tables for a total request of five thousand six hundred and five.
I'll just remind you that even though the Quinta is in, in Convention Center Department, it is actually a general fund. But we were very nice to them.
Back to the Convention Center, um, one of the, one of the items that we're, we're looking at is to enclose the facility and have perimeter fencing. We did budget for, um, a small portion of that for eighty-eight thousand dollars. The total amount, uh, to enclose the facility would be, um, about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We're looking at making, um, a very nice perimeter fence around the facility that would allow us to keep the facility safe and secure, not only for special events, but also at nighttime when those facilities are not being used. We've noticed that they're dark and people like to hang out in dark spaces that are maybe a little bit.
I guess I would just like, I'd like to see the lines of what exactly the perimeter is and an example of the fence.
Absolutely.
I just don't see Convention Centers anywhere fenced out like in other cities, right? They're always open, kind of public space.
Yeah, Commissioner, I think that we're, and that's an excellent point. We're looking more at our outside activity and I know you've noticed that when we have an event like Mexlon, you know, we put temporary fencing around Oval Park, block off, you know, parking and so on. So we're doing it almost every time and it's taking a lot of manpower, obviously, to do, put it on, take it off, put it on, take it off. So we'll definitely show you where that is, but it's not so much enclosing the building. It's enclosing the outside areas that we're using more and more and, and make it very strategic so that it is where we need to be, you know, ticket taking and so on.
The other, the other thing, Commissioner, is that we'd like to, so Oval Park is a park and all of our parks close down at a certain hour. So if it's eleven o'clock at night, at that time, we'd like to be able to close the park. And if there's no activities going on, then we would open it at six in the morning again. But you have a lot of, uh, activities going on in our parking lots in the U D's.
Is it bad activity other than maybe people hanging out and making out or drugs or?
Depends what you call bad activity.
Human activity.
If activity passed eleven P M., so it's unsustainable.
Fun activity.
Yeah.
Because I'm kind of with Sebi. When you have a, a, an area like that, it's open, looks beautiful, to enclose Oval Park? Every time I go to the Convention Center, I go through Oval Park. I'm just used to it. I don't go through the other parts, so what would happen? If I do that, I can just imagine how many other people, they just see it, that's where they go to.
The idea would be to close it, um, during the non-operating hour, so we would keep it open till eleven P M. at night and then close it after eleven P M. because that's the area where we would have less, uh, manpower and less surveillance. So since a park's closed at eleven P M., we're proposing to close Oval Park at eleven P M. as well.
You're just going to send everyone back to Bill Sheen parking.
Yeah.
Let me ask you this. So what perpetuous prompted for you to want to fix it?
Because they're putting it up and down all the time, right? I mean.
Well, the fencing, the fencing, the perimeter fencing for special events goes up and down all the time, but that, 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 that activity that we're discussing, um, has been a, an issue for Convention Center for, uh, for many, many years.
It sounds like a security issue, though.
And it, and it is security.
I've talked about a, like a park ranger, so to speak, or some, you know.
Much more subtle than that.
Somebody to be, somebody to be going through our parks, especially the bigger ones, and, and monitoring that activity. Yeah, it seems like that would be more of a, an answer than.
I guess it's hard to visualize.
Than the fencing.
Well, you mentioned part of the problem, that there's places and areas in that, in that area around Oval Park that are dark. So Chief?
Chief, send the law patrol.
What is the least expensive, most probably possible effective way to deter?
Light.
Light, right? So have we looked at options at lighting? Or if the premise is to really have a more permanent picture or structure to allow us to have Mexlon, to have the other events that we propose to do throughout the year, well, then that's different, right? But if the issue is security and safety making preservation of the facility, well, I think there's other options because I do agree with the mayor and with Commissioner Adada and Kenny have stated, it is a public space. And I think that we want to, we, it's a very nice public space. And as a matter of fact, just two years ago, wasn't it designated as a?
Right.
What, was it?
Right, 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 just right.
Right. So now you're going to want to enclose that? I mean, to, to me, it's, it's, you know, conflicting, you know? We want it to make it a memorable place, right? A, a place, a moment, and time of the experience, right? Because we want McCallell experience. I think if you put that fence around there, especially for the visitors, at least from my perspective, it almost seems like we wanted you here, but not past eleven P M., right? And then, but you. But I think there's other ways, you know, if you're, the issue is to deter crime, to deter mischief, to deter other things, deter the bad element, you know, out there in the community. I think turning lighting is one of the less expensive ways.
We've had accidents in the Oval Park before and so if, um, if the decision is to not enclose completely with perimeter fence, we would, we would probably, um, still come back with some sort of hydraulic boulders or some sort of, um, some sort of, uh, system where we can at least enclose the, the vehicle, um, vehicles that are traveling through there because they travel really fast. There's a lot of people that are walking and, and people at night are speeding through the Oval Park and it just becomes a little dangerous, so, um.
I mean, I mean, we can bring this back.
I think if we could take it back and show you all what we're talking about and y'all can look at the fence, and maybe there's an area that you feel like, you know what, let's secure the back parking lot, but let's leave the Oval Park open. I think that's something we can.
Yeah, I mean, you mentioned boulders. There's other communities where at the intersection, you see them there, you know, they have a hydraulic system, as you mentioned, or just inserted, you know?
Um, and then, Commissioner, you mentioned lighting. We did get a quote on what it would cost to convert all of the lighting to LED lights. The LED lights would be, uh, cost efficient in terms of electricity, but also provide more lumen, more lumens and, and brighter, they would just be brighter and have a larger area. And the total amount, uh, to convert all of the lights is a hundred thousand three hundred and sixty dollars. So that would also increase state security and also.
Well, there's still an issue with the coverage because of the trees, you know, there's, there's quite a bit of trees and weren't we still having, wouldn't we still have an issue because the trees would be blocking the?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, well.
How much of the lighting is probably closer to end of life percentage wise? I mean, if we were to do that, right, I mean, how much, how much lighting would we be replacing that still has a long life ahead of it?
I'll have to get that number, um, to you, but we are starting to replace those lights and those, um, ballasts when they go out, trying to slowly convert them to LED lights.
Yeah, that's what I was.
Need the notes?
I'm done.
Read it right.
Bring that one down.
Thank you, I don't.
Engineering.
I'd like to thank everybody for allowing us to go over our budget today. We have several departments that will go over. Uh, I just wanted to say a thank you to Angie and, and management for putting the budget together all the time that they put into this. I'm sure everybody's going to say that, but, but it's true. They put in hundreds, if not thousands, of hours between the three of them at the Budget Department. So thanks for putting that together for us. I'm going to go through, through the budget fairly quick, um, looking at the city manager's recommendations. The department feels that, uh, you know, most of what we asked for was met and, and we can, we're able to work with that. But before I do that, I'd like to give you an overview of our current emphasis for the year and then our future emphasis, uh, for the department as it stands in the short tenure that I've, I've been in the position. You know, our emphasis for the year is, is working on our development and, and getting better at, at development and making sure that our development approach is correct and meets, lines up with, uh, City Commission and management. The other, one of our other goals for the year is project completion. We have had a lot of projects. We have the drainage fee, we have the street fund, we have the capital improvement fund. We have a lot of projects that we want to get out and put on the street for construction and we make that an emphasis for the year. We also emphasize the year between myself and Mario, we've, we've been reaching out to other departments to extend our expertise to parks, public works, uh, Quinta, the bridge, um, and we want to make that a focus so that we ensure that as we do development, we do thoughtful development and there is, uh, the expertise that we can provide, we, we want to lend that out. And that's an emphasis that we have for the year. Moving forward in the future, as we build this budget and other budgets, uh, we'd like to work on advanced planning, our drainage, street, and capital projects. We don't only want to come forward with the construction money, but how we're going to design that, how we're going to get that into construction and the years that it takes so that you can, uh, plan that out for the future. And so we, we plan to bring that on our next budget in future years so that you can see that, uh, development of projects. We also like to look at, uh, working on our capital maintenance projects, so working closer with public works, um, on streets and drainage and other capital maintenance projects that we need to look at. And that's our future emphasis that we, we'd like to work with them. And so that just gives you a little background of the department and what, what we're looking at doing. Getting into the, getting into our budget requests, um, we made, we made a request for some car allowances. We had several positions that did not have car allowances and we did not have, we only had one vehicle that they were sharing, um, that was funded and, and that works for us. We go down, we had some small, uh, requests through supplies and other servicing charges in engineering. This request was based on, for several years, we had been doing reductions due to the, due to the economy back in oh-seven, then back in, I think it was fifteen and sixteen, we had another reduction. This is just trying to get back in line to where the budget was and, and this slowly gets us to where we originally were, um, in previous years so that we can operate and provide the, the equipment and everything that, that staff needs. And we got ninety-one thousand five hundred and eighty dollars recommended by the city manager. We believe that that's, that's a, that's a fair, um, request. The ones that didn't get funded, we had requested an adjustment on several positions. Do you, sorry, sir.
I guess the main thing is, the main concern is the stuff that you and, you and the city manager disagree. And the reason I say that is because like I told you all a few years ago was. was that if you all feel strong enough about an item that Mr. Rodriguez doesn't agree, but we might. So that's, I think, if we can concentrate on that type of stuff, we'll go much faster than just going item to item if you all agree on everything else. That's what I think.
I, I can definitely do that. I think there's only one item and I, I don't think we disagree with management. I think-
Well, I guess maybe we shouldn't say disagree, but there's varying thoughts.
Man, man cover Roy. Where reasonable minds differ.
Management's looking to, the only one that I think we did not get funded was the position, we're looking to increase salaries based on the tenure, not the tenure, but the level of engineer that we hire. So we hire an engineer with five years, 10 years, or 15, we'd like to put a pay separation.
Instead of a new-
Right now, what happens is no matter whether you have five, 10, or 15 years, we fund you as if you're an entry level or an engineer between one and five years. That's the only request on here that-
What's that, what's the difference that it would be?
For, for about three positions, it's about anywhere between five and $6,000 of moving that up.
Is that, is that engineer and architect, where is it? Where is it?
Those levels. Those would be on your personnel revisions for the development, transportation and-
I would agree with you. We, we hire somebody with more experience that can immediately bring value compared to somebody that would take a little bit more time, I think they should be compensated a little more.
Yes, and, and we are losing people. It is very competitive out there, and we, we can't lose this group. Yeah, and if we're going to hire, I'd like to hire a little more than an entry level.
Well, there's nothing wrong with entry level because we gotta give people opportunities if it can be that too, but-
Yeah, but- But if we do get it- There's positions that need to have some experience.
You have to have that cushion, you can get some people with that experience.
All I would say is I definitely need to come through with management because it, it does have a budget impact and I wanna make sure that I'm in tune with what management needs to do.
My comment is this, if you wanna keep talent, sometimes you have to pay for it.
Yeah, but I think we're talking about two different things here.
There he comes.
Here comes the rebuttal.
As described at the end of that statement is, that's a longevity issue, okay? So there's two different things going on here. If we hire somebody that, let's say it's got 15 years of experience, I think that we'll take that into consideration on a case by case basis, but to pay somebody because they've been here 15 years is a longevity issue. That issue goes across-
Okay, hold on a second, are we talking about new people or what are we talking about?
I, I, we'd like to pay for the experience, not necessarily longevity. I think there are certain employees that are here right now that they, they do have that experience, but it's not, we're not considering longevity pay. We're, the way we've written it up and proposed it is based on their experience and the years, the, the complexity of projects and that they're able to go out. So I, I think we're in line is just longevity, there is another push for longevity pay, but that's not what this request is.
So it's just more based, based on experience, based on the market, based on that type of stuff?
That, that's, that's our request.
Would someone with 10 years' experience within the city of McAllen be paid the exact same as someone with 10 years of experience outside of McAllen as a new employee? Is that, is that what you're saying?
Um, no.
The same base?
If I, if I hire a drainage engineer today with one year of experience and a drainage engineer with 10 years of experience, I offer him the same salary rate.
Well, but to Roy's point, to Roy's point, that's where subjectivity of, of management or hiring comes into play, right? You, you work within those confines, so I would expect that you'd have the ability to get with management and offer more if you want to acquire the, the 10-year experience versus the one year.
But they don't have the flexibility right now.
Are you required to, to offer the base minimum for each?
Yep.
Right, right now, we want, we have one job description that is part of the issue. It is, the job description has one range-
There's no flexibility.
There's no flexibility in the job description. And so as we propose, we would need to develop different job descriptions.
And, and to put over there, pay depends on experience or based on experience, they give you that flexibility. You said in the county.
But don't you have like a senior level person that's designated senior engineer? Do you do that or just-
Currently, we do not have-
Everybody's just engineer?
Oh.
We need to add that.
Yeah, you can come at it. Make it more flexible.
But money wise, we're talking about just a-
Six thousand?
Yeah, I mean, it depends, as, as you're hiring people, it, it would depend on what, what talent we could bring in.
Well, I'm sure you all and management can, can figure it out pretty quick. But I mean, I think we're leaning towards, experience should be paid, and if somebody comes in with more experience, they should be compensated a little more.
If we want them. If we want them, as they go through the, the hiring process, then we, we believe that this person is, is what we want, is a fit for our city, what does it take to get?
But that discretion exists today, so I'm not, I'm not exactly sure-
Nobody's saying that it doesn't.
It does to hire people. We, we have that, I have that discretion.
See, but then you have the discretion to hire the ones with less experience that come with the base pay, and somebody with 10 years of experience would probably not wanna come in without that base pay.
Because you're posting what you're, what you're paying.
Yeah, right.
We probably be getting only newer individuals, because there's nothing wrong with that either.
We can definitely take it back to management.
Take it back to management.
Let's add it. Just add it.
We'll work it. Good.
Make it happen, make it happen.
Okay, what else do we disagree on?
Beyond that, management actually has funded everything in the department.
I know, and this was mentioned before, on the $35,000 for engineering fees, is that for, it would be for a multitude of different small things, right? Not just one, one night, one project?
Yes, but, you know, Roy explained it to me, and, and it was a little misunderstanding of how Development Corp and, and when we asked for money, it was more for special projects, but as special projects come up, a, a, an account is made, made for it. And so there'll already be a fund to do those projects and fund them correctly. So there's not a necessity as, as us and management believe for that line item. So I, I know we requested it, it was just, we didn't, I didn't understand how to procure an, I'll give you an example, Zoho was one. When we started Zoho, we needed to get an environmental-
Yes.
I, I needed to get them on, onboard quickly. I didn't understand how that account is created, and so we said, well, let's, let's make this line item for budget, it was going, we were going through the budget process. But as we spoke with Roy, Roy, you know, explained to us, you know, this is an item, you come to me, I'm, I'm making an account for that, and then you'll get funded, and that's the account you'll be taking it out of. So there's already a mechanism for that, and we understand that now.
Okay, keep going.
Okay, so the next department that we have, we go to street lighting, and the only request there was, we asked for a utility increase for that, and that, that was funded, that was just based on, we saw that trending up. And that department does not have personnel, it's just mainly to pay for streetlights. And just, you know, that way you're aware of how much we, we roughly spent a year, we spent about $2.4 million on utilities for street lighting alone. So as we add additional street lighting, that, that will go up. Part of the reason it also went up is we did install a lot of lighting in District 6, and so then the additional money we, we requested was just to fund that utility along with the increases. And as we do more, we'll, we'll come back and do additional-
Keep on, keep on doing it.
On the same thing, are we doing the streetlight audits where we report back to AEP, are there certain streetlights that are-
Twice a year.
Twice a year, okay. Because we do get either a rebate or a credit.
What was that about? How long has it done with it?
Oh, yes.
So you do it twice a year?
It's bugging me.
So it's twice, when I, it's twice a year?
Twice a year. We do one in the fall, one in the spring when we do the changing time.
Okay, very good.
The other, the other department is City Hall. We did not have any requests for City Hall. We currently have, you know, the, the size of the building is the same, so our, our maintenance activities continue the same. We're able to, to work with that budget, so there was no request on that budget, and so everything stays as it was that year.
Because now we're moving with a extension or expansion.
We're gonna be putting out an SOQ for the feasibility study. We hope that this month we'll have that out and we'll be, yes, sir.
Why do we need a feasibility?
Yeah, that's exactly what I was gonna ask.
So what we, what we had taken a workshop was the feasibility of moving the commission chambers down to the first floor. And if that was possible or not.
Can we decide?
Well, I, some of the challenges or what we, we need someone to, to look at that is we have a safe, how that operation would move, and then we have an elevator and a staircase that make that first floor difficult unless, you know-
Correct.
You move MPU out or you leave MPU there, there, there's a little bit of feasibility on reusing that, that space that we currently have.
So that's already engaged.
Not necessarily about the expansion, but the reuse.
But then there was the issue of moving chambers down, but is that, that important?
At, at the meeting, that's, that's the-
I raise it.
I think it is worth looking at.
I raise it because if we wanna maintain security in City Hall, the, you wanna keep the public space open at the first floor.
That, that's what we're attempting.
And so you limit the access that goes to the higher floors.
You forget where the sixth floor is sitting.
I understand that. I don't dispute that. But to make it more accessible-
That's why we wanna move down and closer to the community.
To go to number five.
Right. So as opposed to right now, where they're pretty, you know, anybody can walk in and go to a few levels ago.
So we need a feasibility.
I mean, you can't take-
Onwards.
So we need a feasibility study.
Okay. Yes. The next department is the Development Center. Again, some of the requests we made here at the Development Center, we have seen increased traffic, prices have gone up, this is one where we felt that we needed a little more operating to keep it in the shape where developers would come in, it looks cleanly, and so we did, we did make a couple requests, they all got funded, and so we're in agreement with management on that. There's nothing on this that we disagree with.
I have a general question on the Development Center, engineering and planning. I know planning's not here, but in terms of the number of staff members that we have, you mentioned there's more activity and we're probably gonna continue to get more activity. Do we have enough staff members? Based on the volume that we're seeing and are we, are, are we being as responsive as we should be with developers? I mean, that's a loaded question, but-
So what I've seen, and I may be speaking, stepping on Michelle's toes, planning has made some requests, I, I kind of generally look at everybody's budget. They have made requests for employees, I know building has made some requests. Engineering, we got one last year that we requested a helpful development. We're evaluating that position right now and how helpful that is. It's similar to Mimic Building, how they have an intake customer. We, we hired that position where they can intake, do some of the preliminary feedback with, with the, with the developers prior to getting with an engineer, so we make sure their paperwork is correct, make sure that everything they have is correct before they move on to the next step. So I think every department is making the request they need to fulfill that, but Michelle could also speak to the full development process.
I mean, you know, could you use more always, but when you slow down, then you got people sitting around. So I think as efficient as you can be and appropriate level, we are adding a planner. We added the development specialists last year, Beto, who is like my presence over there on a 24-hour basis. He's doing a really good job about getting around current issues. We still have a little, little issue with staff being shy about letting the, oh, no, here's what, I'm telling your, your engineer, you know, and I think that's what we're just gonna kind of really close the loop, but nine times out of ten, then there's probably a specific issue with the city manager's request. And Beto's saying, I'm pouring it out of her.
So is Beto the only person that does that or do we have?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I'm involved, I'm over there every day, you know, so it's, it's the city manager. And then what the changes we're making with plants examiner, fire, and hopefully that's gonna help us as well, it's coming here, and then Roy's on the plan actually as well.
Great.
And what I can tell you about Beto, he's not shy about walking in and directing his office because he walks in the office all the time. He, he's done a good job. I agree. The, the last department that we have to present today is, is traffic, and I don't know if you wanted to present. So the only, the only item that we had on traffic, and I, and I'll tell you a little bit of what the direction I gave Marlen when we did this budget, before we get into one item, and I, I think it's already resolved. It was the same as, as the Development Centers, to try to get our maintenance program on the operating side back to our normal operating level. And we're trying to get this phased over three years to get back to normal operating levels. We had been cutting back due to some, you know, as, as we had economic downturns or, you know, we asked us to slow down. And so we're just trying to get back to the same level. All of that got funded. We did make the request to get the, the director job in line with the engineering request, and so we're gonna look at that already. There was one position in engineering that we felt needed to, to move in line based on the years that they have as being an engineer and the expertise that they provide us, and we'll work with management on that. Beyond that, our, our goals align as far as development. Traffic has been integral in, in the development process. We brought them in, and I think we're, we're doing a, a really tremendous job in development and, and getting developers through the process a lot better, and that's a testament to what Marlen and her staff provide, because they play an important part in looking at traffic. And we do the drainage and, and the site development side, and so I think we complement each other well, and beyond that, there's nothing on the request that city management did not fund, and we appreciate that. And we, and we open it for any questions. That was the last department.
Okay. Thanks, sir. Thank you.
Mayor, City Manager, you know, echo what Eduardo mentioned of Yehida, you know, we wanna thank Angie and her team for, for helping us out this year with the budget process, the budget meeting, and for allowing us to take the time to present our budget this year and our recommendations and requests for the next fiscal year. To start off, you know, we are very appreciative of what City Manager made his recommendations to our department. We'd love to accept the recommendations for that. So I'm gonna keep it short and sweet. This is not a disagreement. You respect you as City Manager. There is, there is one item that I would like to share with you, and that's, and that's an additional new vehicle. We did get a new lawn maintenance staff last fiscal year, which was a three-man crew. Currently, we have 15 personnel that oversee our south side parks with four vehicles. So currently, there's a six-man crew riding in one vehicle, which makes it inefficient for them to get to their parks in time and then dropping off and picking up. We do have five vehicles for the north side crew, which we have 15 personnel on the north side that sees, that oversees our parks. So that's just one recommendation that I would like to present to you and the commission moving forward.
Money wise?
Excuse me, sir?
Money wise?
Money wise, it's a, it's a $46,000 unit, it's a three-quarter ton crew cab, lawn bed for the maintenance crew.
Why a three-quarter ton?
Three-quarter ton because of the trailer pool that they would have to carry sometimes and heavy equipment on them, the lawn mowers and all that equipment that they need to haul. So that's our standard, is a three-quarter. Areas that they gotta get into, the green space that they gotta get into, so that's, that's just my recommendation.
They're desoldered.
It's regular gas, sir.
Yeah, we don't want desoldered.
So, yes, sir, so that's my request, but I wanna thank Roy, City Manager, for the recommendations that he did. He was more than generous on providing what we, what we needed in order to provide that customer service to, to our residents here in Seattle.
So, but pretty much that one, so, so you have six people in one vehicle going to different places and that's inefficient?
Yes, sir. So technically, we have, a crew is made up of a crew leader and two groundskeeper, and that makes a team. So each of the team has their own vehicle to get to their parks. So each of the team has their own vehicle to get to their parks.
Can you, can you, on the, on the category of vehicles, can you quickly or briefly describe the differences? So I understand that the three-quarter ton crew cab, long bed, two-wheelers to pull the trailer, right, with the equipment? So what are the other two?
So the other, the other ones that we had requested was a three-quarter ton regular cab service body, which would be for our welding unit, our welders, to go around the city with their equipment, their boxes that they need to carry.
All right.
And then a three-quarter ton regular cab flatbed, is just a regular flatbed for like a portico crew, small equipment.
Oh, I see.
So those are the difference between...
Of the three different types, of the three different type of service vehicles, the one that's more pressing to be sure that the crews are being used and put in place is the crew cab, right?
Correct, yes, sir.
But you're requesting three? You're requesting three?
We did request three. I think there was a little bit of a mix-up there, based off of the current vehicles that we have now.
Okay.
That are getting replaced due to the depreciation value and fleet recommendation. So we are currently getting three vehicles replaced.
Oh, I see.
And then now just asking for one additional vehicle.
One of the two new? One of the two new?
Yes, sir.
Yeah? Because we added some, some new parts. So they're gonna need mobility. I'm okay with ourselves.
I think it's a good idea to add that.
I think so.
Very good.
There you go.
But that's all I have. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir.
Do you have any other questions?
It's a new vehicle, but it's in District Six.
Just make sure that vehicle goes to District Two.
Just depending on how the redistricting lines...
Oh, yeah, that's true.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you, Dan.
Okay, we just leave... So I'll be...
Yes, sir.
I'll be shorter and sweeter. Now, last year, I came, I came to you with something like this, and you complained because it was a size 10 font. This year, I'll be in a size eight. So... I think with this, it would make mine very, very, very quick. So you've got, what I've submitted here for your review right quick is analysis of the budget proposal. The far right, two columns are the, I think the columns that will present information that you want to know today. The first, the first column to the, to the, to the right, or towards the end of the right, which is titled City Manager versus Budget Request. If you look at the bottom of that, there's a difference of $358. What that means is that what we have requested and what the City Manager approved are effectively the same thing. So, so that's what that column intends to, to communicate to you today. The next column, further to the right, that is where the money, that tends to, or wants to indicate to you the growth of our budget. If you look at, that column is titled City Manager Recommendation versus the Adjusted Budget. That is the current budget we're working on right now. If you look at the bottom number at the, on the second page, that's 1.8 million. So, so our budget this year will be 1.8 million over last year. And where that money is at, that's what I intend to, I'll just very briefly explain to you. Those are the items highlighted in orange. If you look at going down the column, the first two are the personnel items. There are about $850,000 or so in what we call CBA agreements that we agreed to a 4%, and some might out of time. So that's CBA money that we're committed to. And then there are two police officers that are working to that money as well. So you've got 1 million in compensation, and then the corresponding amount for benefits is 162, 160,000. So again, coming down to the next item, line item across is other services and charges. We have a net growth there of 88,257 dollars. That is basically the depreciation estimate for 15 units that we're buying in this year's budget. So that's an estimate by...
Fifteen?
Fifteen.
Yes.
So that's an estimate that's produced by our fleet management personnel here at the City of McAllen, and that's based on that estimate. So, so the, the growth of 88,000 there is the necessary depreciation funding that we would need to put in, into, to buy those 15 cars. The next line item, which is maintenance, that's a net growth of $329,000. That money is in fuel costs. If you look to the, to the line item itself, it's a fuel cost, that's an increase in fuel costs, that adjustment made to the budget this year. Yes, sir. A net, a net increase of 329,000.
So you're like, uh, in one, one year?
Fuel costs, yes, sir.
And you're ready to stay at this price?
Yes.
So if they go down, you know, the...
Right.
We have a sufficient...
Yeah, and that, that trending right now is down?
It is down, but... Yeah, I would not, I would not...
So the next two items, growth, you look at capital outlay, and we grew that by 99,444 dollars. That's capital outlay items. And non-capital outlay, that grew by 103,577 dollars. The next page is a very, very brief analysis, overview analysis of the budget in its entirety. And what this is trying to tell you is that at the end of the day, we've got 1.7% of the budget, that is discretionary money, which is the capital that I talked to you about. And of that, 0.6% is a contract amount of 245,000 dollars that we are, the department's share of the radio system projects that we're paying over a period of, I think, 10 years. So we really have about 1% of the budget that's proposed and accepted here. That is discretionary money, discretionary spending, which is, again, going back to the principle, and that is that we requested a certain amount and except for $358 that, that, due to adjustments in the budget, City Manager approved every, every one of our requests. I heard yesterday somebody wanted to give us about 15 more officers. We're willing...
Yes, yes.
Will they take them?
Very good.
I noticed somebody asked a question about two officers only. And so, so there are two things that go into that. One, we've got a new population estimate that you know from the census. So we've had to adjust our numbers down in order to stay within what we call the 2.0 per thousand population. So that keeps us, that will keep us at that level for a couple of years as we grow about that market. So that's one, one item that, that, one, one item of reasoning behind that. And the other one is that we do have, remember, we had approvals to submit a line application for 15 officers that's in progress right now. So, so I just wanted to explain that. Any questions?
Kind of a collateral to the budget that's proposed. I know that in years past, or some years ago, forfeiture money was used for the, the parking garage, correct?
Yes, sir.
Do you have any projects in the near future, depending, and I have no idea what your balance is on the forfeiture asset balance is, but, but are there projects that you're thinking or contemplating the next couple of years?
We keep, we keep, I try to keep about 1.2, 1 million, 1.2 in front balance for emergencies.
Fine.
Just last week, or the last budget meeting, the City Commission approved almost about $300,000 in, for laptops, for mobile, for units, what we call, or NDTs, that is mobile data laptops. So with this budget, I've got 15 more in here, and then I've got, I figured out a way of buying the other, I've got another 20 or so more to buy on top of that. We've got a total inventory of 85 NDTs in our, in our, in our system. We've gotta replace them to the, to the new version.
What's that, chief?
I'm sorry?
What was that?
NDTs, 50, I mean, 85 of them are in our inventory. And those are the, those are the computer, the hardened computers that are in the, in the base. So we bought 15 here last meeting. There's 15 built into this budget, and I've got, I've got some things working. I'm gonna be able to get the, the difference to fully get them all done this year, all the 85.
Equipment like shields, all that type of stuff, you're good.
Yes, we...
Training and everything's in there for whatever you want to do.
Yes, yes, we, it's all in here. I would say to you that we spent probably between 250 and 500,000 dollars a year, above and beyond the capital of city budgets from other sources. So, so like, oh, so that's what we can keep, that's what we can keep our requests at the level that we get.
Very good. Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you, chief. Chief?
The other chief.
Chief, chief, oh, chief, chief.
All right. Well, first, and you're gonna hear this again, I want to thank the Budget Committee for everything that they've done. They listened to me back in spring.
Thank you.
And again, echoing the department, as you've already heard, they've been very generous to us, to the fire department. I want to thank them, not just for ours, but for everybody else that, I don't know how they compile all that data and filter it down. Apparently, this year, they just gave money to everybody, so... Thank you, Roy.
He put those checks in.
So in, going with what the mayor said, we're gonna look at the things that were not recommended, I'll just leave it at that. Starting in the decision package, there was a request for one lieutenant position, and this one is tied to another item right below it, the six firefighters. In our rolling five-year plan for '22, '23, we had one lieutenant's position in our five-year plan that's coming up this year. We also have the opportunity to put in for the SAFER grant under FEMA. We can put in for a SAFER grant, which stands for Staffing Adequate Rescue Emergency Response. Basically, the federal government will pay the salary and benefits for an employee for the first three years. So we put in for six personnel because we have one in this, this coming fiscal year, and in '25, '26, we have five positions, three captains and two lieutenants that we're requesting also. The idea was to get them on board, if we got the SAFER grant, get them trained up for the first three years, the federal government pays for them. Once these other positions come online, then we just reclassify them. And we're currently actually doing that right now for the reclassification of firefighters and new drivers and lieutenants for Engine Eight. So the SAFER grant, where it says the City Manager gets recommended, I think it's based on whether or not we get the grant. So that's kind of a, a little bit of a misnomer there. If we get the six, then I don't need the lieutenant position because the lieutenant is one of the six. It's all tied together on that. Dropping down to, let's see here, going down to supplies, clothing and uniform, we asked for $5,000. That's tied to the new positions. So right now, we don't have the new positions, so therefore, we don't need the $5,000. Going down to other services, professional services, I had requested 36,000 additional funding for professional services for an armed guard. We've been having a lot of issues, and I know somebody just mentioned with a sixth state of the city. Well, we had an incident very close to our location. We've been having incidents at our property, so we had to hire an armed guard from 10:00 a.m., 5:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m. on, every night. So that's been in our budget, I'm going overall that line item this year. I know there's been some discussion, I don't know, I'm not bringing to all of it, about some other form of security service citywide or other city buildings, but that's one that we're gonna go negative on this year.
This is for armed guard services at Central Station?
At Central Station, yes. Our dispatchers, when they do shift change in the middle of the night, going outside, and there's people standing outside, and a lot of our dispatchers are female, so we've had to provide that security for them.
Put more lighting, man.
We actually have. As you walk out and look right back up, we've added a lot of lighting.
But are they like there in the area?
They park in our parking lot, and what they do is when they get there at 10:00 p.m., they go to the front door, they call our dispatchers, and we have a camera inside, okay, they're checking in, and they sit outside, and then they check in occasionally. When our dispatchers are leaving, they call them, and they'll meet them at the door and walk into their car.
But what type of a tenant?
We had a lot of vandalism on our front porch, a lot of the lights getting broken out. We recently had a stabbing on the northwest corner of Cedar and 22nd. That was just a couple of weeks ago. So we're not in the best area, so we've been providing that security for our personnel.
I can't tell you the number of defendants that prosecutors have had addresses in that area. So I know what you're talking about.
As long as the address is not 201 North 24th. Yeah, okay. All right, so that's the, on the decision package, it's just those four items. The lieutenants, the firefighters, the uniforms, and the professional services. Going into capital outlay, there was three items, let's see here, under... Under machinery equipment, a radio signal booster for $51,000. If you're in the middle of my building, and you walk into one of our restrooms, and you were using a portable radio, you can't get a signal. That's normally not a big deal, but our dispatcher, sometimes we have one dispatcher in the middle of the night, and they have to use the restroom. So they're not able to answer the radio. So one of the requests was for additional emergency communication specialist, which was recommended for approval. It was kind of a this or that, so since the dispatcher was approved, we don't necessarily need that radio booster inside the building. There's just too much steel inside the building, that's one of that problems. Under machinery equipment also, the next two items, the high-pressure airbag kit and the medical training medical. I've already met with City Manager, we've looked at and found other funding for that. So those two items are actually, we're gonna get money for it a different way. Let's see. All right, so software, the fire plans, review software. I had put this in here for our fire prevention personnel that work at the Development Center. When developers and contractors bring in their plans, instead of getting the hard copy, writing them up and trying to scan them, we actually get them digitally, we can put them on the board, we can do the markup on the computer screen itself. With the position that Michelle was just talking about, the plans review person, this software would actually be needed by that person to do that job.
I recommend we do that.
What's that, sir?
I recommend we do that. Done.
All right. That's the one I really am wanting. Did you talk about the reading number, Adam, sir?
I'm doing the ones that were not recommended. I can go back to...
Oh, I'm sorry. I look at it wrong.
But a lot of the, we can look at it already done, though. Based on what you're telling us, some depends on some other projects, then some are already...
It's in there.
But on that one, on the forms you have in front of you, it shows that it's not recommended.
Yeah.
But I just wanted to let you know, it is, we're covering it with the budget. Next is, I had requested three additional SUVs this year, brand new. Two of them were funded, the third one was not, but again, that third one is tied to the new lieutenant position, which, as you saw above, is not recommended, so that doesn't even fund it this time. Last is a forklift, $36,000. Across the street from Central Fire Station, the admin building, we have a warehouse, and it's got a loading dock. So when stuff comes in on pallets, we either have to undo all the pallet and pick it up ourselves, or borrow a forklift from traffic, which is currently two blocks away. We've been very fortunate right now, the military and Texas Department of Emergency Emergency have been in our building, and they have a forklift, so we've been able to do that. But when their mission goes away, and they go further away, we're gonna need a forklift. So the alternative to that is, when we need a forklift in the future, we're gonna have to drive it from Hackberry and Bicentennial through the neighborhood down to our facility and use it, but...
How often are y'all using it? What do you unload them?
I would probably say every two or three weeks. When fire equipment comes in, it's heavy, it's big, heavy stuff. And as far as line items under the decision package, capital outlay, that's what was not recommended. I am very happy to say that everything under non-capital outlay was recommended, every bit of it. Before I, I close on that, I would like to say that the fire department is growing right now. We have Station Eight in the training building that's currently under architect development, they're making up the plans. We're activating Engine Eight, and we're recommending to activate Engine Eight in this year's budget. With that, it's gonna come some changes down the road. This lieutenant's position is for our training facility. Right now, when we have a fire academy, which lasts, for the fire academies, our driver operator class, and our EMT, that lasts about eight, nine months of their first year there in the academy. When we move out to the new training building, which is under development right now, we'd like at least one more staff that we can dedicate to the fire academy, the EMT academy. So that's where that one is gonna be from. And I know I'm asking for money, but I also want to let you know that y'all aren't the only source that I've been asking for money from. Grants has been wonderful to us. Right now, under CDBG, we have $500,000. Some of it's previous stuff that we're still spending, previous years, and going forward, there's also monies that they're giving us for FY '22. there's also monies that they're giving us for FY twenty-two, twenty-three. We put in for the SAFER grant, that's three hundred and ninety-three thousand a year, so three years. You're looking at a million dollars there. And the last grant that we're still waiting on is the AFG Assistance for Firefighters grant. That's a one million, four thousand dollars that we're waiting to hear on from the federal government. So while we're growing, we're also looking for other funding sources. Touching on the growth down the road, in twenty-five, twenty-six, we're asking for three captains, that's one per ship. However, in looking at it, we're probably going to ask for that to be adjusted to a battalion chief. That's a reorganization issue, because if I have three captains on ship, which this would make, three captains on ship with all equal rank, who's in charge? So instead of getting a captain to be the third, we're looking at that as a battalion chief, to have somebody in charge over the entire ship. And with the growth of Station Eight, and they're talking with the City Manager, there's other future development in the Fire Department. One tied to the airport, we're looking at some issues there, and then just growth in general. So five years, ten years down the road, we're probably, I don't want to tie in a specific year, we're probably looking at another station or two down the road. One of the issues at Station Four, which is the airport station, the airport firefighters are going to be moved inside the airport property, because right now, we're on the perimeter, and so we have guys that respond into the city and responding to the airport. We have to split those, so that's another station outside the airport property. And then we're also looking at future growth of our new fire station down the road, too.
As far as our IOC rating?
I S O?
I'm sorry, right, I S O, not I O.
Yes, sir, we're an I S O of two.
Two, okay, and that's rating that we just got bumped up maybe two, three?
Twenty fifteen or twenty sixteen.
Okay. And so on a collateral issue to that with operations, some, a year or maybe two years ago, the dispatch calls, which were originally routed through FAR, they're getting routed, I guess, with PD now, right?
Right, four years ago, we brought our fire dispatch back in-house from FAR Fire.
Oh, I see. Everything going okay with that?
Yeah, other than the signal problems inside the building and whatnot, and, you know, the growth is definitely desperately needed in that position.
Very good.
Which is being addressed in this year's budget.
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
I remember some time back, we were looking at the coverage areas, and there was a noticeable, I guess, lack of coverage in the Mickey Row area, which is part of District Three, and has there been any discussions about that, what we're going to do there?
I can get into the history of the station placement back in two thousand and five. We had a consultant come in, Mike Peach, who used to work for I S O, the Insurance Services Office, that gave us that rating. If you look at the way those fire stations are placed, you can either look at a diamond or a circle around it and think, okay, that's its general response area. Station Two, in the middle of the city, lengthwise, has gaps on either side, it's not gaps, it just takes a little bit longer to get there. The recommendation from two thousand and five was to move Station Two over towards Second Street and build one in Station, in front of Station, I'm sorry, Station Seven in front of Mickey Row. In fact, at thirty-four oh one Vine, if you look on the appraisal district, the plot says Station Seven in the California market. However, we rebuilt on-site at Station Two, so unless you want to tear it down and move it east, we'll build another one on the west side, which I'm okay with, I mean, but there's costs involved in that as well.
Well, I'll continue to ask, just because, I mean, we got that chart that indicated, you know, where response times are maybe lacking and potentially, and so there was a noticeable area there, so keep it in mind.
Yes, sir. Open any other questions y'all might have?
Do you have that chart? What chart are we talking about?
On me right now? I can get it.
No, I mean, what chart are we talking about?
The coverage.
The responses. When you and I drove north, I showed you a nice colorful chart.
Oh, I tried.
Trying to forget it.
I will say, back in two thousand and five, and I think it was two thousand and eleven, we hired Mike Peach as a consultant to come in. Right now, Rebecca Olagudel with Development, got her title. She has a software that you can put a pin here and say, okay, show me the drive time five minutes out from that location, which is essentially what the consultant did. He said, okay, if you put a station here.
You should have hired Rebecca.
Well, I think that Buxton Scout, I think, is the software. She just presented on that last year, year and a half ago. So I've been working with her to develop these response maps. So kudos to Rebecca.
Thank you, chief.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
It's all the mayor and commissioners for today.
Really?
My gosh. I thought we were going to do that. You guys are just fast.
I can go long.
I want to go. You're not giving this room. Thank you all. This workshop is adjourned.